The January twenty-third Falls Township Planning Commission meeting, can we salute the flag, please?
We just do the flag, United States of America, this republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bennie can take role, please.
Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Hartzell.
Present.
Mr. Coin. Not present. Mr. Everett.
Present.
Mrs. Luschuck is not present. Mr. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Haney.
Present.
And I am here. We have a quorum. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to go out of order to delegate Mr. Henderson temporary chairman as we reorganize the board.
I'd like to start with calling for a motion for appointment of chairperson.
I make a motion to appoint John Haney as chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll just back to Chairman John Haney.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion for vice chairman.
I make a motion to appoint Colin Henderson vice chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for secretary?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brian Bennie as secretary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Stan.
Do I have a motion for assistant secretary?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Daniel Everett as assistant secretary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that concludes our reorganization.
I'm going to put the date and time of meetings.
It is seventeen oh four.
No, no, no. I make a motion to keep the date and time.
Oh, sorry.
Day of the time, fourth Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock, wherever building we're in.
We're in, yes. I'll second that motion. Pull the board, Mr. Bennie.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Hartzell?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
The, yes.
Mr. Haney.
Yes.
I'm all miscombobulated here.
Sorry. Got one over my head as well. All right. Mr. McGinnis, do you want to move forward with item number two before one?
Item number one is also.
Perfect. Whatever, your choice, sir. Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Real quick before Mr. McGinnis presents, we're going to table item number three until next month's meeting. Mr. Duma? I don't think so. Floor is yours, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. Okay. All right, good evening. My name is Mike McGinnis. I'm with Begley, Quarland, and Mandio. And the first item on the agenda that we're here on behalf of is an allocation of space application that we have submitted on behalf of Donja LLC. I have with me Eric Clayce from Gilmore and Associates, who is the civil engineer for the allocation of space application. And I also have Tony DeSandro with me, who is the owner of Donja and CVA, who has historically occupied the premises. If you take a look at the site plan, which is before the Planning Commission for a discussion tonight, there are a vast number of what I call, and I think have been historically known as movie lots, that comprise a portion of the property that Donja owns. So if you take a look at the site, and this is noted in the Jones Engineering Review Letter, there is a paper street, Rome Street, which has been unopened for years. I went back through aerials, I think going back to nineteen ninety-three on the county website, and CVA has occupied both their own controlled area as well as the paper street for decades at this point. And then you have two, on the site plan, the far right portion of the property is what we have designated as a lease area, which Eric will discuss in a second and can point out maybe for you what we're talking about here, where we are proposing to lease to one tenant. I'm using the phrase proposing. From a legal standpoint, the reality is there has been a single tenant who has been operating at that location on the property for a bit over one year. The property is zone HC, and Mr. DeSandro did not realize that this would potentially cause any issues because the allocation of space process in the township was a relatively new process, where you go in front of the board to get approval to create a new lease area for an additional tenant. So Gilmore and Associates had come up with a plan that depicted the area that's in front of you for consideration this evening, and we submitted it to the township, and we received a review letter. And in preparation for the Planning Commission presentation that I think we were going to do in November, if I recall correctly, we took a look internally, collectively, and realized that because the property is zoned HC, having a particular area that is just designated primarily for long haul trucking for one tenant was not permitted by right in the HC district. Now, CVA's use historically is also not permitted by right in the HC district. And this area of the site, which is something we're looking to again get approval for the allocation of space, has been utilized historically as a construction storage yard for decades. But it was accessory in nature to CVA's use. And the transition from a accessory CVA use to a second principal use on the site meant that we needed to go to the zoning hearing board, which we realized on our own end, flagged it proactively, tabled the planning commission meeting, submitted our zoning application, appeared in front of the zoning hearing board with a presentation to seek approval for that particular use as a additional principal use on the lot, went to the ZHB, did a presentation, alerted the neighbors, of course, as we would be required to do based upon the notice provisions, had no objection from many of the neighbors, and received unanimous approval with one condition, that there being no, like, storage of any junk vehicles on the property as part of the occupancy moving forward, which then allowed us to come back in front of the Planning Commission this evening, attempting to advance again the allocation of space application. My understanding, based upon some other properties in the township, is generally, there can be a concern when you have a particular area that's being leased to multiple tenants. It can devolve pretty quickly into a mess from a junk standpoint, or a storage standpoint, or trailers that are uncontrolled. So one of the things that we wanted to do to be mindful of that tonight is to at least volunteer a condition that we'll put on the record here, and we'll put on the record again to the supervisors, that assuming this is approved for an allocation of space, this will be for a single tenant. And CVA has been here forever. They're going to continue to be here. But this is not going to be a situation where you have four, five, or six different tenants that each take up a couple thousand square feet of a lease area. It'll be a single tenant. There are approximately thirty-five trucks. Again, they have been here for over a year. Many of them go off-site for a week at a time. And reviewing some of the aerials in preparation for the presentation at the zoning hearing board, I think the way that area of the site is composed now has been done in an orderly and professional manner. It, again, sort of transitioned from this construction storage area to what it looks like presently. Mr. DeSandro can address the Planning Commission if there's any concerns or questions, but I know he's expended, I think, north of a hundred thousand dollars in that area to make sure it's cleaned up and really staged, I would say, appropriately for this tenant. So that's what we're here to present this evening. There is no development that's proposed. CVA's operations otherwise are going to continue. There's a comment in the Jones Engineering Review Letter regarding the paper street. I would submit, as a matter of law, twenty-one years, paper street, unopened. It's really already a sheet to property owners on either side, but we have no objection. If the township wants it formally vacated, we're fine with that as well. So that's the summary. At the outset, I'll turn it over to Mr. Clayce to give a little bit of an overview of the lease area. And then again, I have Mr. DeSandro, if there's any questions about CVA's operations here and the intent with the one tenant moving forward. So otherwise, thank you.
Good evening. As Mike correctly said, there's an existing business on site, CVA. They, that, the business itself has always stored trailers on the property. As recently as a few years ago, they start leasing it out to a second company. The trailers on the plan in front of you, you guys all have the set, but on the second sheet, in the green hatch, it's a cross hatch, shows the area where the vehicles are stored. It's towards the back of the site, which on plan east, so in general, this location right here, I'm circling. There are no proposed features. We're not proposing any impervious. It's, what it is today is what it was yesterday, what it is tomorrow. That's pretty much the gist of the presentation. Just wanted to call out where the lease area was on the plan.
And then, yeah, you can, you can see Rome Street, basically, CVA, Donja, one and the same, from a functional standpoint, owns basically a dozen, north of a dozen parcels here. We went through, not to bore anybody any more than I do normally, but one of these little slivers was owned by someone that was not Donja, which created some confusion at the township going, okay, CVA's occupying all of this, but you don't have the right to use this, like, two-thousand-square-foot area that was conveyed, owned fifty years ago. So we went through a quiet title process and actually got that officially documented and transferred. So we can stand here and say correctly that this is the John Pidgen piece, is all owned by Donja now, until you get to this portion, and then you run into some area that's presently owned by Berms. So here's Rome Street. The township once had vacated, we can submit the documentation to facilitate that. This is the area that was utilized as a construction storage area, always had vehicles, equipment, millings, et cetera. That is now orderly and used for the approximate thirty-five trucks. Otherwise, there's nothing else that we are proposing. No construction, no alterations. And everything else in the review letter, there's only a couple comments, I think, are all, will comply.
Any questions for the board?
Yes. If, if, there's going to be just one lease.
Correct.
Why is there a separate lease for trailer storage? Or is that on a previous plan that no longer exists? Maybe that was removed, and I'm looking at an old plan?
There's a separate area that says lease area parking, and then there's one that says lease area trailers. Lease area trailers being closer to the bottom.
It's all one large lease area planned. It's just the trailers. That was our office just pointing out where trailers currently are. It's not two separate users. That entire hatch pattern is all for trailers slash vehicles.
So to get to that trailer lease area, you have to go through a piece of the property that's not leased? By a point, by a point.
We could widen that out if they'd be to make it so a vehicle could traverse it. We could make that a little wider so a vehicle could traverse it. Not a problem at all.
And what size vehicles are coming in and out of here, these thirty-five vehicles?
They're eighteen-wheelers.
I, I would have some concern about the impact that that's going to have on Spencer Avenue, or Spencer Drive, or whatever it's called. This is a small road. It's not the full width of a, of a fully developed road. I don't know what impact that has on turning maneuvers in and out of that road, or coming in and out of Route One. That would be my concern. My other concern is, when I look at the plan, you have a huge area that's wetlands margin that is occupied by the lease. But yet on your plan, it says that zero wetland margins are going to be disturbed.
That's correct, because it's an existing condition that's been going on for twenty years. They've always parked there.
There's areas that aren't cleared yet that are in the lease area, and I expect that sometime in the future they will be.
That's a correct statement that you are utilizing everything that's always been used, correct? We're not going any further than it's always been used.
That's all I have.
And Mr. Bennie, the other comment I would make is, this is separate and apart from any functional practical impact on Spencer, but we did, in a weird way, one of the advantages of going to the zoning hearing board is we had to notify the other property owners. So to the extent there is a concern, I think there's a couple residences along Spencer, that they have an issue with this, nobody appeared to voice an objection, and the use is not, it is perspective in that we're attempting to have it documented correctly, but the tenant has been operational here, I think, since twenty twenty-two. And I'm unaware of, and maybe it's occurred, and I'm not familiar with it, but I'm unaware of people calling and complaining to the township regarding any negative impact. You know, CVA has been here for decades. They're going to continue to be here. Obviously, they don't want to lease space in a way that's going to be detrimental to any of their neighbors or to their own business operations. It's always been in industrial use in that area. It's going to continue to be in industrial use. And as I said, many of the trucks that are there are long haul. They leave for a week at a time. It's not as if it's a distribution facility where you have trucks that are coming and going constantly every day.
So you said you're storing thirty-five trailers there?
Approximately.
I know. Is that, I mean, you said they, they don't come in and out every day, so you might one day have ten trailers coming in and out, another day twenty-five, thirty. It depends on...
It varies. So as of right now, there's, if you go back there, there might be ten. Sometimes, like, when the holidays come, it could be thirty-five, like, when they're all, they're not working. So right now, it's in and out, but they'll be gone for long periods of time. So right now, there's, there might be ten to fifteen trucks there.
So you don't have thirty-five trucks and trailers going in there every day?
No, absolutely not.
You might have, like you said, during the holidays, maybe you'll have thirty-five in there, but that won't be all in one shot.
Yeah, they'll, some will come in, some will be out. It's just during the holidays, sometimes it increases a little bit because they don't work during the holidays. They need a place to park.
So most times, like, the most you get in there in a day would be what? You sit roughly?
In a day, maybe ten.
Ten in and ten out, or just?
Yeah, ten and ten.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. McGinnis, can you just let us know what you're going to put in for variant, or, sorry, waivers?
I think we, as an allocation of space application, whether that's analogous to a waiver of development, I think Doug and Joe review it separately or differently than we do a typical development. So we're just asking for this to be a waiver of development slash allocation of space. That's all, as a blanket.
I think you've mentioned you'll comply with the comments in the.
Will comply with the comments, and again, we'll volunteer the condition explicitly, however the township seeks to enforce it regarding it being a single and sole tenant with never being more than one on site.
Doug, any comments?
Within the lease areas, and CVA is technically a tenant, Donja and CVA for liability purposes.
No, the comments there for the plan requirements, you know, we'll be able to work that out with the applicant, as far as, you know, not needing any waivers.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for a waiver of land development. A waiver's a waiver, yeah. Oh, that's right, okay. So waiver of land development for Donja Track Lease Area, one-ten Central Avenue, tax map parcels, third, a bunch, yeah.
As noted on the Jones Engineering Review Letter.
Yeah, per the Jones Engineering Letter, all those tax map parcels that listed, Zone Highway Commercial, you will comply with the Jones Engineering Letter, you will comply with Fire Marshal and Township Engineer, Traffic Engineer, and you're also agreeing to, it'll be a single tenant, only property.
A single tenant in the lease area, CVA would be the other tenant, so.
So it'll be single tenant in the lease area.
That's right, yep.
And accordance to all the, agree with all the testimony you provide here tonight?
Correct.
Second? Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bennie, pull the board, please. Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Move on to item number two, Corco Chemical Corporation, two ninety-nine Cedar Lane, Fairliss Hills, PA, one nine zero three zero, TNP thirteen dash zero one three, dash zero one three, dash zero zero one, minor subdivision.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis, and on behalf of Corco Chemical, I have Mr. Duma with me, who has prepared the plan that is before the Planning Commission for consideration. This is a minor subdivision application for the Corco property in the township. I'll give a little bit of background here, and then Heath will discuss sort of the plan evolution from the initial submission. The Corco property, I think probably a few members of the Planning Commission are familiar with, it's just south of six acres. And I was here for a different project a couple years ago, and I witnessed a separate application relating to a subdivision that was not received particularly favorably at the time. And understandably, I think the primary concern, and I was not involved when the lots were created and divided, but you have the main Corco piece, which is developed, and then you have a parcel, that's Jonathan Way LLC, which is in between, and then you have this elongated strip behind the Jonathan Way LLC piece. And then you have the other undeveloped portion, which we have labeled as Lot Two on the plan. It's also owned by Corco, and it's one contiguous parcel. And if I recall correctly, the subdivision that was proposed at the time had the, I'm going to call it the stem, for lack of a better term, the area behind the Jonathan Way LLC piece ending, but there was still going to be the stem. And you're creating two parcels, but one of the parcels was going to have this stem to nowhere that was creating issues, and it did not receive a favorable recommendation from the PC. And then I don't know if they even presented it to the supervisors or not, or it died on the vine. So Heath and I were retained to pursue another subdivision with Jim Shepherd, and the original iteration had a different solution to the stem, but the stem existed still. And recalling the presentation that occurred previously, we had discussions about trying to come up with a better and more permanent solution to a imperfect situation. And I'm not here to say that necessarily we've solved everything, but I certainly think what we have now is a much better design than either A, what was, what the current existing condition is, B, the plan that was presented to the township a couple years ago, or C, even the plan that we had initially filed. And what I mean by that is, the solution was to take the stem, and I think it's about point one three acres, and convey it to KPK, who owns the large piece for purposes tonight behind the land that we're here to discuss for Corco. And the result of that is you finally have a situation, I think, that comes close to normalcy from a planning standpoint, if the subdivision's approved. You have the Lot One, developed Corco piece, which then would be basically regularly shaped and improved. You have the stem goes away, it's given to KPK, it's disconnected, untethered. And then you have Lot Two, which is also a rectangle, closer square, that's undeveloped. And we understand that there's, there's going to be some challenges in the event that Mr. Shepherd ever goes to develop Lot Two because of the existing contours with the floodplain. But again, those are existing now. If you went to build a building on Lot Two currently, you still have those concerns. If you went to build a building on Lot Two currently, you still have those concerns. So what you get out of it is a permanent resolution with two regularly shaped lots, one of which may or may not be developed and will be a separate process in the future. The resulting, remaining, developed Corco piece makes sense. KPK taking the stem makes sense. And you come up with a better outcome than what we were dealing with at any iteration previously. So we have review letter, which we'll go through in a second. Everything in here is a will comply. There's only a few comments. All the waivers relate to the fact that we're not proposing any improvements at this time. So we're asking for waivers related to installation of sidewalks, street trees, et cetera. Just a subdivision application, and again, attempting to fix an imperfect current design. So with that, Heath, if you can just give a quick summary summation of what I did, and then...
I think you just covered everything that we just...
Okay.
You took my speech.
So, but that's where we are now. And that has been the evolution since our involvement as well, and the revision of the plan from what was initially submitted to the township. We also went to the zoning hearing board from an, to receive a variance to facilitate the subdivision for impervious surface earlier in 2023.
Any board members have any questions or comments?
Just have one comment. Note eight says there's no public water available. There's a water line that runs down that road. And there's a fire hydrant right across the street practically. So I think there is public water available.
Okay. Thank you.
So just in layman's terms, you're going to subdivide this little parcel off, and then you're just going to sell it to KPK after all this is finalized?
KPK's agreed as part of this. That was part of our conversation to come up with a solution here, so yes. We subdivide, and KPK gets the .13 acres, and we have two normal lots afterwards.
And I agree, it actually would make more sense instead of the little slice before.
Right.
I appreciate the island and the somewhat severance of actual square parklands.
It's not, I'm not saying it's perfect, but it's a heck of a lot better than what I've seen on it before.
Yeah, but that little part, when it goes into the bigger thing, you know, I mean, that just makes a whole lot more sense.
It does.
For everybody, so, all right.
Question? Do you have a question? Mr. McGinnis, you want to just go through the...
Sure. So as I noted, everything, I'm looking at the January 17th review letter from Jones Engineering. We have a waiver request relating to installation of sidewalks at 19139G. We have a waiver request from 19148A relating to planting of street trees. Waiver request from 19148H relating to buffer yard plantings. And again, these are comments that if this other lot is ever developed, would be a consideration as part of the development process at that time. 19151C relating to the intended development of the entire track. Again, there is no development presently proposed for the resulting Lot Two. 19161 regarding sidewalk along Cedar Lane. And then 19162 relating to curbing along Cedar Lane. Everything else is a will comply.
I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion for the minor subdivision application of Corco Chemical, 299 Cedar Lane, tax map parcel 13-013-013-001, Zone HIA FM. With the file grant, with the filing waivers being granted. 19139G, 19148A, 19148H, 19151C, 19161, 19162. And we'll comply with the rest of the Township Engineers' letter. Also, we'll comply with the Bucks County Planning Commission's letter.
Yeah, the, I mean, sure. The only note that I'll say from the Bucks PC letter is that was before our solution with KPK. But generally, yes, everything else is compliant.
All right. Agree with everything with this, according to your testimony?
Correct.
Yes. And in accordance with the Township, Township Traffic Engineer and the Township Fire Marshal?
Yes.
And in accordance with your testimony presented here tonight?
Correct.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bini, poll the board, please.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Joe? Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to item number four. Sunbelt Forest Products, 400 Rock Run Road, Fairlissles, PA, 19030, TMP number 13-028-062-003. A sketch plan.
Good evening, members of the commission, Mr. Chairman. My name is Scott Mill. I'm a landscape architect, working in the land planning department at Van Cleef Engineering. Our office put together the sketch plan that's in front of you. With me tonight is Matt Ross, who is the maintenance supervisor at Sunbelt Forest Products. The property's located at 400 Rock Run Road. It's in the planned industrial park, the district of the township. It's currently a manufacturing use, which is a permitted use in that district. It's about eight acres in size. And looking at the plan, I have an aerial photograph here. The site is outlined in yellow. And running along the south is Rock Run Road, which is a private road that is actually owned by Sunbelt Forest Products. They also own the land on the other side of the road, where you can see basically a stone laydown area with some trailers. As mentioned, the property is about eight acres in size. Existing use is a manufacturing facility where they pressure treat lumber and deliver it to retailers, hardware stores in the area. Many of the buildings you see on the property are basically sheds that provide shelter for lumber. The building in question and of our substance tonight is in the lower right-hand corner of the property. There's an existing building. It's got kind of two sections to it. The left portion is about 100 by 100. The idea on that is to take that down to the ground and rebuild it. On the other side of the existing building, between the outer edge of the building and the property line, the proposal would be to put an additional in there that's about 90 by 95 feet in size. The concern tonight, or what we're here to discuss in part, is that there would be a variance that would be needed related to that. There's a minimum side yard requirement of 20 feet. With this building addition, we would be within four feet, or we'd be at four feet from the property line. The idea and the intent of replacing the left portion of the existing enclosed building and adding the right would be to help modernize and make the building and the facilities more user-friendly and more efficient in their ability to produce product and do it in a timely manner. In terms of context, you can see to the south of the site, on the other side of Rock Run Road, is a large warehouse building, distribution building. Same thing to the north of the warehouse, or the facilities is another warehouse. And to the right or to the east is also another manufacturing facility with a stormwater basin in between. So you can see from a context standpoint that this is an industrial park. It's all industrial-related. What is being proposed to be added is relatively small in the grand scheme of what's out there already. Additionally, we're proposing, as mentioned, the road is a private road to add some on-street parking, although that road actually acts more of a driveway than a street. But would be to provide on-street spaces along that frontage to provide for additional parking for when guests arrive or when they're needed. With that, we've received a review letter from Mr. Jones. There's really not much, being that it's a sketch plan, there's not much to review in terms of engineering aspects. He does note the variance that we're requesting or will be requesting, and a couple of waivers that we noted so far. As we go through the engineering process, there may be additional waivers that we may be seeking that may come to light that just don't come to light now as it is a sketch plan. And there's also some other general comments related to sewer, getting a Fire Marshal review, Traffic Engineer review. But we wouldn't have any issues with, you know, providing that additional information as we would move forward, assuming we get the variance with further engineering of the plans. So with that, if you have any questions for me or Mr. Ross, he can give you some more background and information if you have detailed questions about the operations there and what exactly goes on. He can help out as well.
Any questions?
Yeah. So you mentioned that Rock Run Road is a private road, but it's listed on the PennDOT liquid fuel text for Falls Township as a public road. So I would want some clarification on how it's, how it's private or public?
It's a private road, basically, at the end of the property line. From that point down. And there's a, it's hard to see on the aerial, but there's basically a cul-de-sac bulb around there that, that that whole portion, that the site fronts on is private.
And I was looking at your plan, and maybe you could correct me, because, so you're tearing down the one portion of the building, and you're going to build the exact same footprint. Is that correct? Same size?
Correct.
And then you're adding a new building?
To the east side of the existing building. And the idea being, based on the manufacturing process with the pressure treatment, there's really no other opportunity to put that building elsewhere surrounding the existing building.
When I, when I did the math and I subtract your proposed one-story steel buildings versus your existing one-story steel building, I don't get the same square footage as your proposed building. So maybe you just want to check that.
Okay.
It's all by a couple hundred square feet.
We're well under the building coverage requirements?
I find that hard to believe, personally, because I see all these long buildings here, these, I don't know how long they are. I'm shocked that you're that low. I really am. Could you please use the microphone?
All the long buildings are T-sheds, where we just store the wood that's already been treated. So they're completely open on all sides.
Do they still meet the definition of a building, Doug?
For purposes of this plan and my calculations, I included them as building area, building coverage.
How much of the property to the left that you own?
I'm not sure exactly where the property line is, but definitely encompassing that portion of the tract. And I did not include any of the private road or that parcel in my calculations for determining building coverage.
So why can't the building be over there?
I think, yeah, Mr. Ross can better explain the process and why it does need to be to the right of the existing building.
All right. So how it works now is this current building that's here, this is offices. This line here, there is two 80-foot-long by nine-feet-high cylinders that wood gets loaded into this way, gets treated, and then comes out this way. This building here is also open about 50%. This entire side is open, and this entire side is open. It's called a drip pad. When the wood comes out, it's wet, it literally just drips dry. So the wood is placed on this drip pad. When it's dry, it comes off and gets stored before it ships. The proposed plan, to make it modernized and more efficient, the way it works now is it has rollers. It has large metal rollers with huge chains. The new system is a tram, that all the wood is loaded on one tram, the doors opened, and a pneumatic cylinder pushes the entire tram in and then pulls the entire tram out. So the proposed plan is one cylinder will be loaded from this side, and then unloaded from this side, and put on this drip pad. This drip pad, which would also be completely open on this side, and partially open about halfway on this side, the wood would be loaded in on this side in one cylinder and come out. So the drip pad capacity would double. Because that's kind of our choke point here. You'll treat all day. This stuff, this pad will fill up. It takes a couple days to dry, and then you take it off. It's currently, when we treat, summer up here is the busy months. We don't have enough lumber for going out, so we actually get loads that come in, or we treat for the entire winter to try to build up our supply for those months. So with this plan, we could kind of treat in a more on-demand system.
So you're putting a bigger capital investment in to upgrade your facility, and that's why it needs to be put there, because it's the start of the process?
Correct, correct.
I had a quick question. On the Rocky, Rock Run Road, private road parking. First off, what type of vehicles do you plan on parking there? Are they regular vehicles, 18-wheelers?
We have roughly 25 to 30 employees. Right now, this portion is half our parking, and then we have parking along here. We would move this parking, regular vehicles, passenger vehicles, some here. And then also, currently, the parking ends here. We were going to extend the parking on the other side up here to just, any parking space that was displaced from here would, would be, you know, moved over.
And how many at maximum would you have on site at any given time?
Cars.
Employees, cars, yeah?
Between 25 and 30.
Okay.
Well, the new modernization of your process and hire more employees?
The current plan is not. There might be a couple more, because we would just have people towards the end of the day unloading the pad, the pad areas, to put them away. But the current plan is to just increase capacity so we can actually treat the amount of lumber that needs to come in. All the wood currently that comes in, comes in on the rail line.
Okay.
And then leaves on trailers. So we load whatever is the orders for the day onto trailers here. They're parked back here, and the drivers come in, pick up their loads, and then leave.
So there's coming in trucks, picking up the trailer, leaving, basically?
Second question on the Rock Run Road. Looking here at the plans, it says you'll have 18-foot, 9-inches space between the side of the road and the end of the parking. Do you see any concerns with fire equipment, especially with your type of product, being able to pass all those vehicles and get to the rear of the property?
For a fire issue?
Fire truck, yeah.
Yeah, a fire truck can get in here. 18-wheelers get in here. And 18-wheelers currently come up here, drive here, and go up to unload live loads, like wood that comes in that we need, that we aren't able to treat. It comes in here and gets offloaded, and then they go out this way.
Thank you.
Just for my question, observation and knowledge, but do you guys have, how is your hydrant system set up? Is it through the, your own local water, or do you have a pump?
Yeah, so how it works is, these are the two drip pads. The two cylinders are here. Under the cylinders is what we call a pit. It's a concrete lined capture system. We have a water line that comes in. We use city water to do the treatment facility. We mix it with several chemicals. Everything that comes off the drip pad that drips on, it's graded to go into the pit area, and then it's pumped back into the system. Nothing, everything gets reused. We don't waste anything. So what they do is, they pump, when they're doing a new charge, they pump liquid out of the pit. They put it into a holding tank. They test it to see what the chemical ratio is, add what they need to, and then re-treat. So it's all reused.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah. On the Rocky, the Rocky Run Road, where you have the trailers at, do they leave every day? Is there trailers every day coming out of there?
Monday through Friday. We have trailers.
Friday coming out?
Correct.
During the off-season, it's pretty, it's a lot slower, though, than the summer?
Yeah, in the off-season, it's less. We can have between 10 to 20 loads a day. In the high season, we'll have 30 to 50 loads a day. But with this process, we should be able to... But with this process, we should be able to not have, we should have less traffic coming in, because right now we have inbounds and outbounds. If we need certain material where if we did this upgrade, then we wouldn't have as much coming in, because we could treat it ourselves.
Gotcha. So the additional parking is due to the new building, correct?
Correct. The, the new building is taking up a dozen or so spots, so we're just replacing those.
Where on your property do you store the chemicals used?
So on the proposed sketch plan, right where the new building is, there is a tote storage room. We have, you know, the 100-gallon totes. That's there in the proposed sketch plan. It is moved to the side of the building right here.
So where's it currently?
It's currently...
Oh, okay. I got you. I was just... Yeah, and the totes are here now. Yeah, yeah, all right.
It is currently here on the top right.
So that's all you, so that's all you need though for...
Yeah, there's just, there's three chemicals that we use, and one of them is, is salt water. So it's sodium nitrate. The other two are mild acids. And then the other chemicals that we use is, one is MCA, which is a mild acid, and the other is Ecolife, which is, is wax.
Okay.
So, and that's stored in tanks in here. And we get those on 18-wheelers as needed. Maybe once a month it comes in, they pull into this building, and then we pump it in. In case there's a leak or anything, we recapture it all.
I guess, technically speaking, this portion of Rock Run Road really belongs to an adjacent parcel that you guys own.
Correct.
Correct. So you're going to park vehicles from this operation on another parcel, even though you own it, there is the availability somewhere down the road that that could get sold off, and now you're parking in somebody else's road. Is there some reason why we can't modify that grass strip and not, is this, is this road envisioned to be one-way after you park here?
No, it's currently used as two-ways.
So two-way truck traffic doesn't really work on 18 feet wide? You can't pass two trucks past each other in 18 feet if you have cars parked there? So that would be a...
I think provisions would be made.
Use the microphone, please.
I think provisions could be made so that if they know a truck's coming in, they'll hold the truck, outbound trucks, so that they don't have to pass. It's only a short run of where the on-street parking would be located. So there's significant room that one truck can wait while one passes through the parking area.
Is there some reason why parking can't be, if I'm looking at your plan, down towards the road, you have parking, you see it indicates five spaces and then three spaces, you have two handicap spaces there? Is there some reason why parking can't be extended down that frontage there instead of parking in the road?
It can be extended along this way. There is currently about five or six spots here. The transformer is currently in this location, it is being relocated to that location. We need to have a gap right here for 18-wheelers to be able to pull in the building, but it can be, the additional parking can be made down here if it's, if it's required. There would be a gap from this area to this area, but it can be going there if need be.
If you do that, couldn't you make the parking on the street, like, instead of on an angle, straight then along with the road?
Yes. Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that.
So maybe a combination of the two, you get the amount of spaces that you need. I'm just concerned about the narrowness of that road and cars parked there with trucks coming in and out. And like I said, technically, it's on another parcel, even though you guys control it currently. Who knows what's going to happen down the road?
Yeah. I, I think if we can get the most you can within the same line and then cut down on the angle, I think that would be much better. What's that? That's what we're talking about. Go here and, yeah, come here and get there a transformer and then get rid of... Let me see. Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
I would just say this, typically I would be opposed to a four-foot setback line. But given the fact that immediately adjacent to that is a stormwater retention pond, then I would be concerned, because there's no room to actually do grading for stormwater management, all the orders draining directly off into your neighbor's property. So typically, I would be against that. Four feet's not a whole lot of room to maintain it. So if we can make it a little bit bigger, I'd like that, but given the location, it's not the end of the world for me.
Just the reason we made it, if we could make it any shorter, we would. The tram system that goes in, it goes right to the end of the tram system. So right now also, the building goes out to basically where it's paved, so we're not touching, that four-foot area is grass. We're not changing any impervial surface or anything of that nature.
Yeah, I understand the situation. You're, you're trying to retrofit an existing thing.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any room down where the trailers come in, where you have the trailers for parking? Is there any room to do parking down there?
Yeah, if, if, if need be, we could set up a parking area down in that, in that separate, that lot.
It seems, it seems to be a concern for a lot of people here. Is the parking, is the parking on the road, you know, and...
Yeah, people do currently park on the road as a parallel parking situation.
And if I look on Google Earth, I see trucks parked there, I see cars parked there. So if we're going to put cars there and trucks are going to continue to park there, it could be an issue.
Are there questions, comments?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. Sketch plan, see you again soon.
All right. Cool. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. I will entertain a motion for the November 28 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve as typed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.